All right, let's stand for our pledge. And in the moment of silence, please. Right. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And in the moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our students. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide academic and vocal speakers, and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information, they should be summarized within three minutes. Please provide a link on how the coaches and boards review the month. Include your remarks as time has lapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. We have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Grove. Any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. It's ordered to report from our student liaison. You may have to, is it working for you? You may have to take it out of its stand and hold it or something. Is it working? Should be hard. You wouldn't think it.
Thank you. Good evening, school board. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to come home. I want to congratulate everyone here today. To keep honor of my closely done, as previously stated today, he will not be here, but he accurately sends apologies for his absence. Students are represented by school at this, the last time I spoke here. It's the last of both these third of big tournaments on February twenty fifth. The first time since twenty nineteen that our crystal team has competed on the state level. Rep. Mike Hamper's band has kept busy as well. Representing Hamper's band of the ninth of this month in their superior rating, and is now on Virginia Boards of the Board of Director Association All Saints Honor Band. The band have a exciting adventure planned, and it's upcoming trip to Florida, but next time. This year, two varsity soccer teams are created. Soccer was a program that struck up their numbers last year. Representing super specialty co-ed teams squad, and is carried by everyone's love for the sport. This year, student resistance through last year came off, and new new signing season wins.
Thanks, Ray. Any questions for, is there any? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a special recognition this evening, and we have a resolution which the board will adopt this evening. And it's important for the young ladies to know that your names, this resolution becomes a permanent part of the records of Rappahannock County. So when you're eighty years old and you're bragging, you can say, "Go look it up." Shake your finger, right? And, because you will. Right? What a great adventure. I'm going to read this resolution, then the board is going to vote. Rappahannock County Public Schools Resolution Honoring, the Rappahannock County High School Varsity Girls Basketball Team. Whereas Rappahannock County Varsity Girls Basketball Team won their first state title on Thursday, March ninth, twenty twenty-three, and whereas the Rep. Panthers defeated the Eastside Spartans seventy to sixty-five for the school's first basketball state championship held at the Virginia Community University Seagull Center in Richmond, Virginia, and whereas the Rappahannock Panthers started out strong against Eastside Spartans and maintained their lead throughout the game, and whereas Coach Jeff Atkins and Assistant Coach Kaila Roby led the Panthers Varsity Girls Basketball Team to a twenty-one and seven season record, and whereas the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes the girls' basketball team, Savannah Loving, Dakota Stringfellow, Chloe Jenkins, Brooke Atkins, Abigail Atkins, Taylor Pullen, Karen Pond, Summer Shakiper, Shelby Clown, Elena Compton, Julie Beard, Coach Jeff Atkins, and Assistant Coach Kaila Roby for their hard work and commitments which brought the school and community this honor. Whereas the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes this impressive season and the example this team has set for future generations of young athletes in the Commonwealth. And now therefore be it resolved, the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes Rappahannock County High School for an outstanding basketball season and for winning the Virginia High School League Class One Division State Championship in girls' basketball. And be it further resolved, this expression of recognition and accomplishments be made a part of the permanent records of the county. And that a copy of the resolution be presented to the Rappahannock County High School Varsity Girls Basketball Team by the Rappahannock School Board dated this fourteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, sounds unanimous. And the motion carries. Dr. Grimsley and I are going to meet you over here, and then we'll have you proceed up the stairs and across the stage here, and we're going to get a picture, all right? Another picture. I'm gonna try and be a little. So, the other coaching staff of our A P. Yeah, so she wants to take a picture. And so, can I get the other coaches to have up here, I mean, tunnels, can you come, please? And, and we're gonna get, the board is gonna stand in front of these girls, not in front, in front of them, but down here in front, and for a picture with them, yeah? So, let's get centered up, right? Hey, somebody help me out. Where do we need to go, left, right? Thank you. Everybody else who's down. All right. How are we doing? Are we living okay? Are we missing anybody? Hey, can you breathe? Okay, good job. All right, team! What a game. Hey, if you missed it, there is a way to go and look at, look at the game all over. I've watched it three times now. And the commentators do such a good job in the game, and if you were at the game, you missed it anyway. I encourage you to do it. Also, hey, young people, it's very awkward to leave a public meeting, isn't it? But don't feel like, you know, we know you got homework and stuff to do, so. Don't feel like you're trapped. I don't want you to feel like you're trapped, too. It's a prize yours, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the school board, members of the board, members of the board, one phenomenal game was a good one. Um, Coach Atkins is here to join us, and we're going to close this down. Here we join us, and I would like to wear a person who doesn't get a lot of credit to come up to the board with the eviction reports, come up for a team. Um, when you add more, my favorite, and the others, the boss, so.
Just to start, it's an honor to be Rappahannock County director. Most of you watch movies, and you're legal, um, playing for our country. Um, and just to see where you all come and stuck together, um, through pictures with each other. Um, this is what can happen, um, how you set your minds to a goal, um, and you work together. You understand the goal of the team, and you understand what it means to be a team. Not just to rap and yell, but what it means to take care of each other, um, to push each other, um, and always believe in each other. And I can be so proud of you all for your accomplishment. Um, but more than just a champion, you are beautiful young men, um, who I'd love to get to know and watch grow up throughout the years, the years, and I look forward to many more years of being able to do everything that we do now. Congratulations, welcome, sir. Um, thank you for all the community support. Um, we just can't ask for a better week of being champion basketball.
Oh, yeah, it's a great time, great time. All right. So don't feel obligated. I, I completely understand. If I was in high school, I'd be cutting for the door, you know? Thanks for coming out, girl. It's good to see you, congratulations. And now there's some extra chairs in there. You can move up if you have to. All right. Uh, let's move on to item two thousand seven, donations.
I have several donations for the senior trip. Nova Legal Professionals donated two hundred dollars. Maxie Brown, forty-five dollars. Boyd Brown, thirty dollars. Diane Bellford, fifty dollars. Glen Hill United Methodist Church donated fifty dollars for prizes for senior week. And Terry Panaman Services donated a thousand dollars for the senior banquet.
All right, thank you. And those donations will be part of the consent agenda, and, and the letter of thanks will go to each one. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our February fourteenth meeting? So, a motion from Mr. Uben, is there a second? Second, Mr. Grove, is there any comment? All in favor, aye? Aye, aye, pose no. And so ordered, Mr. Grove, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have, and everything looks to be in, in order. We're about sixty percent in the pot.
Sixty percent?
Somewhere in the room.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer, all in favor, aye? Aye, aye, pose no. And so ordered, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is actually the PTO update, but I do not see a member of the PTO. Oh, yes, I do, never mind.
There she is.
Hooray! We have a PTO update.
That's great.
Hello, I'm fully standing on the PTO secretary. Um, thank you, um, having been here, so I have.
You need to, you need to talk right into that thing. There you go. Uh, no, yes, ma'am, now it's good.
I don't have to start with that. Um, so we have a lot of things going on. We have, um, our clothing cottages, if anyone doesn't know what those are. We've got one at the high school, one at the elementary school, uh, that was funded by a grant from the PATH Foundation. And we're able to get two of that money. And the idea is to have open for the students in the. Um, it's, we're waiting for shelves to be built in the elementary one. Uh, right now, the high school one is served for storage, but we were able to use the old shed as PTO storage, which is much needed. So about that's right. Um, let's see.
Do you know when this?
Path and basketball court. Um, obviously, it's done, but the path, the painting's not, or the, the painting's not done. We're waiting for the line painting for the handicap space, um, and also for the court, and that will be done when the weather relaxes to it. Um, but we're just waiting for it to be available. Uh, the Windsorthon is the next huge thing, our biggest fundraiser. Um, takes off next Tuesday with the fundraiser, that will be on March thirtieth. Let's go excited about this for the kids, um, and this is how we funded the, the path. So, um, our goal is this year, continue to improve the upper playground with the structure for the classroom usage, a pavilion, gazebo, play field unit. We'll need your help to gather momentum for the next two weeks for the fundraiser. Gather that, fund that momentum, we're trying to get the kids all excited. Um, basically, it's been a great year overall. Events this year, we'll be launching a fundraiser next year, and we'll focus on high school. Tom is talking with Mr. Sword about that, so, um, we will, uh, still need lots of volunteers. So if anybody, a volunteer, that's the one thing that we, we will. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
I don't second anything, but a question.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the clothing sheds. Have they, have they been openly out, or what is the plant, what is the?
Um, okay, so we're, the, the one we got for the elementary school has no shelving, so we need to have a shelving unit ready and organized with all the clothing, you know, the sizes and that kind of thing, so TV and things like that. A nice little place for people. Um, so that's what we're just waiting for, so.
We have, we have a process for people to access this stuff?
Yes, so, um, Shelley Stoker has been working with, um, the, the counselors, like for, for students in need, and we're gonna have to get volunteers really set up to run it, um, and keep it organized and have sort of open hours. Hopefully, during sporting events, you can have it open, open. Um, and also just during school year, post-school day, and, and he realizes, you know, the counselor will have access to it.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Make sure that PTO knows that we're very proud of them, they're doing great work.
Absolutely.
Great help.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, item four point two is the Remarkable Spotlight, and we have Ms. Lisa Gates, Principal of the Elementary, to give us the spotlight.
Good evening.
Do you know?
So, this year, we decided to combine our math classes and our literacy ones together. We usually do separate, so we came together. Um, Bethany Bossdick was a huge help, and Catherine Todd, and we had, um, a daily engagement night. Um, so, first one on the spotlight, our one school one book. So we were able to provide a copy of, um, Mr. Popper's famous to every student, and to kick off our one school one book, Dr. Leslie Jameson read the first chapter of the book to the whole student body, and then, um, our theater arts group did a little skit. So it was really cool, and they picked up the seat, and they really enjoyed it. Um, so we took the book and we developed our, um, our own paper in the engagement night. So, um, Bethany and Catherine developed this awesome map to give the theater so they could know where to go, and what was really cool. Um, we were worried about letting teachers, teachers survive and participate, so we allowed them to leave half-day on the workdays if they came back to participate in the evening, day to the night, in the work.
That's how you did it.
We had those teachers that agreed to help. Um, and there was a, there were different options, and, um, we had regal levels that Mrs. Grant had did, and school project books, um, snow making lab, they made bread in the classroom, um, and ice, and iceberg talk, which we did, and had a little, um. We had, um, twenty-five staff participants, a hundred and fifty students came, and then a hundred family members came, in addition to those a hundred and fifty students. We had about two hundred and fifty people come. Um, we fed them pizza, that was our only expense. Everything else was donated. So Bethany and, um, and Catherine went around to different, um, restaurants and things, they had all these certificates, and we were able to give about fifteen, or, yeah, fifteen hundred dollars for the prizes out to, um, students that night. So each activity that they participated in, they got a punch card, they got a, um, a rabbit ticket for each one they participated in, and they got to play in a box with whatever they wanted to win. So it was a really fun night. Um, there's some pictures included in this live show. We really enjoyed it. It was a very long day. We did it right before our first spring break, that will always be from now on, so we can recover afterwards. It was very long. Even Spine came in and, um, helped us, um, do that activity, which we were appreciative of. But, um, we hope to make this a ritual that happens every year. So that's why we're at the spotlight this time. Any questions about that?
I just wanted to comment that it was so well organized with all those people there, and, and, and people weren't just going to the, to the room to get the, the card punch. They were really interested in the activities, and they were all educational, and it was really, we had these little, like, my nature of people, we had little hand microscopes and were looking at fungus. It was just really neat how they didn't just want, they weren't just there to check off, they were there to do something together with their family. And we were so successful for that first time, it really shows what a good supportive, you know, family group we have in our school, and how much everyone's here to learn, and it's really impressive.
I think that first students come and said, "We need to get Bethany involved," or, you know, they, they wanted to be read to. Like, shame, and, and, and so we saw that happen, like, "You need to read to yours." And I did, and I did a real fun book that really showcased my accent, and, um, it was fun. But, anyway, it was a great, it was a great night. We had, we had a great time, and, um, we even had Girl Scouts come, and then we had, um, the softball, um, cheerleaders, so we invited whoever wanted to come to show off their, um, their group. So it was a great night. I look forward to it.
And exhausting.
It was exhausting, the work, the process.
All right, thank you, Ms. Grimsley.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is four point three, high school scheduling updates. I'm going to ask Principal Carlos Stewart.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the school board, Matt the clerk, members of cabinet, um, we have our county executive, the deputy county executive, the board supervisors, everybody else. I want to tell my bases. The school board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, charged me to come forward to you and to the superintendent of schools to talk about the scheduling and how we schedule at the high school. Uh, next slide, please, thank you. So what does the school day look like? At Rappahannock County High School, we have four eighty-minute instructional blocks and one block that's called Leadership Seminar in the morning. In the morning, our day starts at, uh, eight twenty, and students go to class, and they go to Leadership Seminar first. In our Leadership Seminar, we use that time to do a number of things. One, to host different school activities, uh, school-wide assemblies and school meetings. This is a time where students can recover learning from that loss. Uh, students are able to go between classes, uh, their Leadership Seminar class and any class that they're in danger of failing. Students can also have the opportunity to go to different classes and receive a speech, and a lot of that has been going on, particularly this school year. And then, of course, we have two programs that we run through, Leadership Seminar. One is called Habitudes. It's a youth development curriculum that emphasizes imagination, curiosity, self-awareness, perseverance, courage, passion, and adaptability. Good things that our students are a country mile ahead of our, uh, our colleagues, competitors, uh, with. And of course, we have a major clarity program. The major clarity program is our platform where we introduce students to college and career opportunities. It's also where our school's commitment, and this board's commitment, is to the three E's of employment, enlistment, or enrollment. We want our students to be able to fall in one of those categories by the time that they graduate from the high school. And of course, lunch, where I get the pleasure of standing there for an hour and a half every day. But, 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 that is a copy of our schedule. I can give a card copy, a soft copy, rather, available to you through our board clerk. Uh, if you want a copy of that. But our building opens at eight o'clock in the morning. We do have a staff member that gets to the building around seven forty-five to open the doors for the kids. The weather's kind of changing a little bit, and we go through our day. Just about twenty months ago, we decided to make the transition to five minutes so that the students, the teachers, rather, have enough time to clean their classrooms, take a breath for themselves, and for students to move about the hallway. By adding that time to the classroom, this is what we did in construction. Students are not asking to go to the bathroom as much, because we built the time into the transition and not into the classroom prior to our, um, coming to the administration that, uh, gap between classes, three minutes. So students would say, "Okay, I'm going to class, can I go to the bathroom?" So we want to kind of build that in, bake it into the cake as they say. So why do we use this model? Well, a couple reasons. One, it's a pretty simple schedule. Students take four classes in the first term, or we call August to December. We're the only school division in this area where our students don't have to go back to the same class in January. And some of our neighboring school divisions, they're all four by four block, but students have to return to that first semester for about three weeks after the holiday period. That can be, uh, difficult. And so our students are able to close the book in December, go on their respective break during the winter season, and come back to the new year and the new semester. Students can focus on four classes at a time, as opposed to seven. We did this, and Duncan Grimsley at the time was our executive director for teaching and learning. This is taking very strategic chunking of the high school experience, not to overwhelm kids. We definitely don't want to do that in this time post-COVID, as students are kind of getting back into rhythm with things. Students can earn eight credits over the course of the school year, more course offerings, internship opportunities, work, uh, study opportunities, and a flexibility with the schedule. If a student doesn't have the success in English eleven class in the fall, using the four by four schedule, we can double book them or put them back into an English eleven class in the spring. Under a different model, that student will have to wait the entire school year to do that. And forgive me if I'm using master schedule jargon in that season at the high school. Now, for the teachers, there are some advantages as well. More minimal schedule for our teachers, and it's an opportunity to take a deep dive into the content. Well, Carlos, what other models exist? I know you're, you're talking about the model you use and has been in existence for some time, but what else is out there? Well, there's the modified block where classes can meet every other day. There are a, a schedule where classes, all seven classes could meet every day, and then you have a modified block where on one day of the week, typically on a Monday, all seven classes would meet. And then Tuesday and Friday, six classes would meet on an A-B schedule, but one class would meet every day for forty-five minutes. Y'all, y'all catch all that? It's a lot. So imagine a fifteen-year-old having to master all of that. The pros to this schedule, to this other model that we don't use. It does provide students with a diversity of their day. Now, what their day looks like, we'll see, but it does provide them a diversity of how they structure compared to what we have now. And it does have the ability to cover all the content areas simultaneously and creating some transdisciplinary instructional models. Interdisciplinary is when, okay, well, in English class, you're doing a little bit of math. Transdisciplinary is when you kind of make all those things come together. Now, so here's some of the cons. It does not offer the same flexibility and respect to remediation or extension, as I mentioned to the board earlier. It would require additional staff, we could do this, but we're gonna need more staff to make this happen. Different staff, we're supposed to have different licenses. Under the four by four model that we currently have, we're able to be very flexible in staff to have different licenses. If we went to a different model, we'd have to make some strategic decisions around this time of year, and we would have to have enough teachers in a time where we have a teacher shortage to come up to do so. And it's hard to find what we call twin classes, so bear with me here for a minute. If you have a class that meets every other day, you have to pair it or give it a twin. I'll give you a really good example. At my other place, we would pair AP one history, a tenth grade class, with, uh, Health and Physical Education, ten. All the classes cannot be paired that deeply together. So when you have a class that alternates days like that, even on a four by four schedule, if it doesn't have a twin, you cannot buy that class. So moving forward, Rappahannock County High School will continue on the current four by four block schedule that has proved consistent and successful for our students, and aligns best with our comprehensive plan that we're going to remarkable with this board past last year. A block scheduling advisory team will be formed in the fall to look at, uh, different options, see what we can make happen, uh, and then we can bring information, if you so choose, back to this board at a later date. I think I take any questions at this time.
Yeah, I, I do, actually, I usually do, don't I? Yeah, I, I was curious, I do actually wonder, or people to learn about the context in which this question was brought up, there are a few, um, a few. There are a few, um, a few concerns that the people that do come back to us as board members, as parents, as we, we noticed the transition between elementary school and high school. And, um, with that, with our, with our semester schedule as it is, there are two things that I stand out to students. One is PE. Having, what is it, 80 minutes of PE, five days a week for half of the year, then zero minutes PE for the other half of the year. It doesn't sound like it would be fit to me. It doesn't, it doesn't give you that lifelong hopefully habit of fitness. So that's one concern that we get brought to us regularly. Another is, we have, if you have eight classes and one, there's one math and there's one English, that means that throughout your high school career, during Rappahannock County Schools, you're going to be having a semester where you will not be having an English class or a math class. And it's, there have been various ways that that can almost, um, you know, obviously through the elementary school, we're having English daily, we're having math daily. So constantly throughout elementary school, we're reading literature. We're also working on other side of our brain. And I'm just curious. I understand what you're saying. I understand the points you make. But I'm curious, I have had, I've had, I think people sometimes experience a feeling of, "Oh, my English brain is rusty and now I have to fit a whole year with English in the half of the year." Or, gosh, I took Algebra I, you know, when I was eighth grade because I was an accelerated student. And then I'm taking Geometry the second half of my, you know, freshman year. So it's, so it's a long gap in math or a long gap. So these classes that are should be, that might be progressive, it doesn't, there, there was, there was a shortcoming that I said I didn't, you mentioned. I'm curious. It might, and I, you do invite it, see you later on.
Well, I have, I have two of them now.
Yes.
I can't, those are very still the points that you made. The school division that physically border Rappahannock County follow a similar 4x4 model. They follow that similar 4x4 model because that's what works for the wide swath of their students, not just one particular sub. Now, you're right. A student could go, a student would take English and have it saved for fall. It may not change English until next fall. Though that's part of the schedule, the downfall to the seven block schedule is that let's say a student.
I'm not suggesting seven block schedule. I'm just saying, when I, when I moved here, it was, it was, it was a four. We was taking, there's, there are A days and B days for black community. I think those are the two recent reasonable options for our size, probably.
And you mentioned, you mentioned the second point, our size. Our size is a little different than when you came here originally. And so the size of the high school now, the 4x4 model fits that better. We had 150 or 200 kids, you could probably do something a little bit more dynamic. But the size of our school really puts a charge.
I'm not suggesting a seven block schedule. I'm just wondering, 8 days and B days and half English all year. Like, or half, or alternate English and math all year. That would, that's a question.
One of, one of the things that I was hoping that we would hear is, is some kind of a, a combination where we can look at, and we can look at, and I reckon, I recognize scheduling 300 kids over four days is really, really hard. I mean, I've, I've done, that's, I've, I've never done 300. I've done five. Five is hard. But to create a situation where you can do some block and some alternate day, which works, uh, you do two blocks in two alternate days and you get a year's worth of, the lack of something else, uh, a year's worth of band or a year's worth of PE or a year's worth of elective. And your two blocks are your academic course of things. To be able to miss that, that meld would be ideal to me from a four or a seven. But I know doing 300 is probably not too bad.
This is my, Mr. Vice Chairman, this is my sixth year doing a master schedule. It's my third year leading master schedule. I did it in my old place as well. It's a lot easier to schedule 17 students than it did my old.
Of course, it is. That's what I'm saying.
300, it, it limits our options. And as I shared in my presentation, when you do it in a meeting, that work has to have a twin. It has to have a twin. And we don't, it, our options aren't.
But it might be worth looking at.
Yes, sir.
The possibility of, of blocking the course of it, English, math, social studies.
Well, and I think if I can respond to that, I ran two of these studies here too. So we, I know for a similar area, but there's some assumptions being made too that you're locked into choosing per semester different options. So you may not have math for a long period of time. So a lot of that is scheduling with your counselor, your parents, and making sure that you do have continuity because it is possible. And if you have options, we use data constantly to drive that schedule. So when we have students, we know they're on, they get their own English and math. So that is already built in. So it may not, even though it's a semester model, they're sort of getting into whether it be now one, part one, part two, or any all-year English 11. So there are those options based on the data. Now, you do have to make decisions of where you're going to prioritize because of our size. And that's where we always end up because what's, what we may say is good for all kids, is it really? And is that where we want to put our efforts into looking at it? Again, we can. It is an extensive process and it does take a lot of data gathering. You could hire a consultant to look at it. And both of the times we've done it before, we ended up kind of in a similar spotlight. You could do it. But there are pretty hefty budgetary concerns when you add staffing endorsements you need. And because we've done so much work on diversifying the endorsement areas of our teachers at the high school, they have a lot more flexibility in blocking a lot of your staff and additional ones. But again, that's where the board wishes us to go in the fall. We can certainly.
I wonder if it might be possible to look at something like PE and art or PE and band as a starting point, like to where. I can't, can't think of a good argument for having PE daily for half the year and not the other half of the year. I just don't understand why, why that could possibly be better. And I also think that over a longer period of time, if you're working on an art project, for example, I could imagine there being, maybe we could start with those types of things to look at. A lot of that matters, but I do think that for maybe for next year, I do think that I could imagine a band schedule that would be also take up just one eighth of your schedule but allow a student who loves music have, to have that eighth of their schedule coursing through their entire year, which for a lot of, for artistic students, it really does make a difference if they have time in each week when they get to do music.
Well, I love that you did say that, actually, because the academy building in there would, would be a good starting point to look at how that play and study works out because that is our next phase and the comprehensive plan is to look at that. And the continuity of arts, and I do appreciate the work that you and David Pond have done in giving art students, band students, more opportunities, whether it be through seminar or changing up the schedule to ensure that they have additional periods. And I know that, I write it to that, it was a little bit of a challenge. So I appreciate that, I guess, from that standpoint as well. Um, but that would be a good focus to start with. And of course, it needs to be fit, increasing involvement with the students, increasing health and nutrition.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do this in the fall. I'm, I'm suggesting that we, we look at, maybe take part of the summer and part of the first semester and try to figure out what would work best for us if we went through the holidays and try to be able to be flexible within a, within a realm where it's your kids. The way I look at it, it was my schedule. If I were going to do it, and I did it for 25 years. And if I were a kid, I'd, I'd double up and I wouldn't have a senior year. You know, I could just go through blah, 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 blah. And I'd take English in my senior year and I'd be done. So I think we need to expand the rigor from that perspective so that it's consistent all the way through. Some, I don't know. I would love to sit down and talk for hours about schedule. I truly enjoy it, but it's, uh, it's very hard.
As a superintendent, those master schedules are not passive as well, so. A parent for this presentation, there are 28, 8 through 12 schools that exist here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Auburn's out to our Virginia High School, we partners in there, Altavista, uh, Gate City. Schools that look like less than typical size, uh, in grade levels, and they also run a block. But I would have to talk to you, Sarah, or to sit down with whatever consultant you hire and follow up to what they.
It'd be interesting to see, you know, sort of surveying staff, sort of surveying students, surveying parents, a program with, with it, if you're able to understand how people feel about the current schedule and what changes might be in there at that rate as well. Even in terms of, does a student tend to feel more successful in school this semester they have PE or not? That's a good question. And I think there is science that has a little movement here in school days, you know, for the whole year. I keep on going around in circles, but I, I, that's because I do think that it could improve the quality of daily school life and yearly school life for our students. And that's our topic.
Having been a student here under seven block schedule and then a parent here under multiple kids with the four block schedule, I like the four block. I like the fact that my kids don't, don't go through, I mean, through and break home, six to seven classrooms worth of work every night. Math, English, social stuff, whatever it is, history, government, everything, every single night. They can focus on four topics through the course of the year. They can specialize. They can get it done. They can knock it out. They can get their grades. They can do their AP. And if they get to that senior year where they only take English, then they can do what I did and go into that employment field. They can go into whatever they want to do. They can go down to rap secret, whatever it's called now, and get more training and more specialization. Seven block is going to cost money. Sorry. Seven block is, is, is going to pull us, is going to pull us in different directions and is going to pull those kids in different directions. I remember carrying that book bag with seven textbooks and seven notebooks and that book bag and everything else and trying to keep all that homework together and all that stuff caught up. And Mr. Even, do you have your favorite? I hope it's in there somewhere with all his meds. Four block schedule, even my son, who was the oldest one, who was smart but lazy, could get it done and stay on task and knock it out and come back to him the next season when he didn't pay attention the first season. I like four block. Can we offer more if the money is there? I would be careful, especially this budget season, before I brought in a consultant and put that money on it. But I think Mr. Bond is correct. I would like to see what parents have to say when they really think about it because I have one son who was part of that small group that needs to be paid attention to. But I have two or three other kids that are part of that big group that we seem to overlap and forget about that of the 300, 275, aren't complaining, aren't coming, aren't asking questions. They're really happy. Two hundred are really happy with that four block. And we're losing kids every single year, smaller and smaller and smaller. So we do have to adapt, but.
Mr. Even, I just thought you were saying that that's not because you said you like.
Uh, or the AP or back and forth. It's, there are several classes in the same week. We're trying to double, double, double versus focus on the four, do exceptionally well, move forward, focus on the four, do exceptionally well. If you're going to build a habit of health and wellness, which clearly I'm not pairing it up, you will do that out of your own determination with, that, that you learned for your health and what's best for you. The school isn't going to integrate into your coach mind, Mr. Atkins' mind. But that's a habit you're going to make because I had PE every single day until 11th grade because I skipped it. 11th grade. And clearly, I did not stick with my PE skill.
Well, and I think the opportunity that we do have that Mr. Stewart did allude to was the, the Leadership Center block. And there could be a lot of creativity that we could incorporate quite a bit more of these things we're talking about without making any major shifts that would impact, you know, the, the division physically, but also the, you know, social, emotional, and health wise, I do worry about that level. Not just for our students, but for our teachers having more threats to deal with already. They do have more than they would like to have. I know in bigger districts, it's better. You know, they couldn't have one single threat and that's great, but we, we don't have the flexibility to now to do that. So I do worry about that. You know, prior to COVID, that was an issue. And we may get quite a bit of blowback from our, our instructional staff that way too. Um, it is something that we could address. But, and, you know, it's under an assumption and there seems to be a sense from the board that there really is a significant problem to open.
I would think, well, first of all, thanks for coming and presenting that to us. And I think the takeaway is that when you're reviewing what you're about to do for scheduling, starting in the fall or even following the fall, that this type of thing is being considered. How to work it in, how to integrate this idea, this theme into what we already have, keeping what we have, maybe answering some, for company sake. I think that's really the takeaway.
Yeah.
And it could be possible that two teachers from complementary subjects would want to offer a class that could alternate fields. For example, you know, talking about a contest of history or mechanics plus the industrial revolution or something like that where you could, you could be really rich if you have that opportunity. And there's ways that we can use some of the things we've been learning about in our, been hearing about at our conferences that are not, I believe, different subjects, we could take that on to me as well. Yes. Appreciate that. Yeah.
And it looks like we might have something built in that we can utilize already. We just need to think about what we can do with that. I appreciate you coming. Thanks.
Yes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the proposed budget. So we've been working for months and months and months on this. I feel like just as soon as we end it, the budget process, we start it again. So that's how it usually goes. So I'm going to give the floor over to Stacy Witt, CFO, to cover the highlights of what we've done. And then we'll go through a little bit of the budget report to further explain in detail some of these items and then take any questions you might have. If that's okay.
So this budget season was fun, to say the least. So it's been very interesting trying to make things work. We were hoping for a million, but that has not come through as of yet. So we went, um, everything that we did is based on the governor's budget that he put out. So we went with the increase of a 5% for all staff currently, which is going to run us right around $254,000. Our insurance premiums came in less than what we were originally booking. They are at 1.9%. So that is going to cost us right around $137,000. We had originally decided last year, once we saw what insurance was doing, that we were going to ask staff to, by year three, do a 50/50 split with our insurance. Dr. Grimsley and I knew that it was going to be hard for our staff members, so we decided to take a look at surrounding counties and see what they were doing. Also looked at our county itself just to see the field. And the majority of them do at least 80% for the employee. So after talking to Dr. Grimsley, we felt like that was something that we should probably stick with too. We didn't want to put our staff at a disadvantage as far as benefits when all of the other surrounding counties were doing at least that. We also did a reduction of five and a half positions in this budget, two at the elementary school, one at the school board, and two and a half at the high school. Like I said earlier, the staff will down to a 20% contribution to the employee only for their health insurance. They will do, the school board will do a 100% contribution for the employee but if they decide to switch to the high deductible plan for an employee plus one or employee plus family. If they stay with either our key advantage 500 or 1,000 plans, the school board will do, contribute 70%. And when they switch to high deductible plan, they will contribute 80%. And then on the next couple of slides, I just showed the comparison of the points that we offer and what the kind of. and what the contributions are from our school board and then surrounding district school boards. For us, we're doing, our numbers are based on the budget that I'm working on. So FY '24. Single coverage, we're going to have our employees contribute 20%. School board will do 80%. For dual coverage, which is for a single dependent or spouse, the school board will contribute 70%. And then for family, this school board will contribute 70%. You can see Madison and Page County also offer the Key Advantage 500 plan. They do about 87 and 88% for the single. And then for the plus one, that they drop off significantly from there. We know that our family plans are for staff. So we have tried to keep that as steady as possible as well as long as, as well as the employee only. The county does not offer a Key Advantage 500 and neither does Moore County or Shaverville. Excuse me, excuse me. On this, so we have ours, UPS, and we have Rapham and Academy. So that's our schools and the other.
Yes.
Okay. The next slide is for the Key Advantage 1,000. All of the districts I looked at do offer that plan. And again, you can see the percentages of the school board contribution or the county contribution to the employee's coverage there. And again, we are lower on the employee end, but we do keep our family and dual coverage closer to the higher range to help our staff members out on that. And then the high deductible plan, you can see that as well. The county government here does not offer a high deductible plan, but the other surrounding counties do. I know one question that we will get from our staff as well. How can the county can offer full coverage to their employees and we can't? Well, they have a third of our employees. So if we did that, it would cost us an additional $200,000. It's just very expensive for us. I mean, we have 145 employees on our insurance coverage currently. So it'll be very expensive for us to do that. Other changes in this budget are revenue changes. State funds dropped almost a million. We were at $114,590. Big portion of that is the capital funds went away. That was a million dollars, a little over a million dollars that went away this year. Our Exor funds, we do have a little bit that will be left for next year, but the majority of those went away. And then we have a grant for headwaters that we are in our last year, right this year. So that will also be going away. Additional changes that we made to the budget, the elementary school textbook line, we decreased $5,000. We moved the construction expenses, the million dollar expenses from the budget. We do not have a new bus in the budget this year or for FY '24. So that has been removed. Our gasoline line, our electricity line had to be increased. Those things have gone up, unfortunately. Our telephone line decreased because we are no longer offering the hotspots in FY '24. And we decreased our custodial line just based on the last few years of our expenses. I was able to decrease that slightly. And so on the last page, you'll see a summary of the highlights of our expenses and our revenues. Through everything, we were able to cut our expenses overall $863,000. But unfortunately, our revenue has also decreased. So our revenues are decreasing 1.4 million. So we do have a little gap to make.
Those are the highlights. The highlights. I've been really hoping for that state to come through. This is what we knew would might happen. And if there's any questions about these details for this way, now that we get into the budget report, dive a little deeper if you'd like.
Any other questions?
Were you going to address which staff we're reducing, which positions? There's fewer staff in this budget. You can do that later on? Okay. Right. Okay. Set on the screen. All right, you have the big budget report in front of you, I believe. The fiscal year '24 budget report. The front matter of this is that it always is to tie to our district goals and our comprehensive plan goals. Those are listed there for you. Of course, our conceptual framework, our road to remarkable that we try to support with the budget. It is our roadmap and this is how we get there. So we need to make sure our goals are at the center of what we do. A little bit of a message from me as well as part of the front matter. We get into our performance highlights as well. We do a lot of data digging as we're playing out not just our instructional strategies, staffing, programs, all of those things, but also how we're going to spend our resources and where best we can prioritize those. Our '21, '22 scores were very, very good compared to the state and surrounding districts. We again attribute that, that we did stay open for the most students possible for the longest we could. And that did take a lot of effort and community support. We thank everybody for that. We still have, that does not mean we don't have a long way to go. COVID impacted everybody, not just in academic learning loss, but of course, mental health and everybody experienced some level of trauma, which does require more wraparound services to mitigate before we even get into much of the academic growth we'd like to see. So that's a part of this as well. Enrollment summary, here's our demographics. Preschool through grade 12 enrollment summary this year is about 741, pre-k through 12. Here's our demographic breakdown. And we talk a lot about this every year, but how enrollment differs from your average daily membership. So we do have quite a few students in our student management system that may not be physically in the building, that we're still responsible for educating. So that's part of that. They will be excluded from ATM and the state says they're not going to fund certain positions of those. But there, in those cases, generally are other funding sources that you might tap into that may not come directly to the school budget. For instance, CSA funds for students in foster care or students like that. So here's our enrollment average daily membership graph on page nine. And it shows a continued trend to decrease a bit. We did have a very unusually small kindergarten class, which really did surprise us. We, there may be reasons for that. I believe there's also COVID hesitancy still. You do not have to enroll your kindergartner until the age of six. So I think there was a little bit of hesitancy there as well. Also more opportunities for homeschool now that all of the new programs that are created to citizens. So hopefully that will be bad. I see a lot of promising, optimistic numbers at CCLC and some of our census data. So I hope that those come back up. But that also attributes to the shortfall in state revenue as well. Understanding how our state revenue, there's a page on page 10 that sort of depicts the issue that we have, especially with our local composite index. When the state says we're going to fund a position to do a certain task in your standards of quality, what they really mean it. For us, this is the portion that they will cover. So I can only have 0.93 of a librarian or funding, 1.6 of a kindergarten aide, so, so on and so forth. So you're getting just a fraction of the funding that it really takes to even run a successful grade level. And then you add to that a support cap dilemma. So we've talked about this before and there is continued advocacy on this issue. And there was some legislation that is being considered, even in the conference budget, to further remove that cap. So we may see additional revenue if the Congress comes out with this as well. But what that does is you, you have some flexibility in the support positions you can have. So for instance, standards of quality might say that you can have four for a thousand students of a certain health professional or mental health profession. So you can have a school nurse in that category, a school psychologist, social worker, behavior interventionist, all these different positions. You have flexibility on that. But then they say, but instead of funding and calculating your state aid for that on prevailing costs, we're going to cap that. So you also get a cap on top of that on your support position. So even though they say you must have these, and they won't even fund that at the same level as SOQ funded positions. So that's an issue we have been fighting for quite a while. And we are getting traction on that. And there's always legislation to diminish that cap. But it needs to be removed and not, not nice. And then supplemental basic aid and SIFT. We've talked a lot about this this year because there's been so much advocacy efforts at the state level to try to move this cap on our supplemental basic aid. House Bill 1443 made it really far. We're really excited to see where it went. 100% in the House. Went to the Senate Finance Committee, but did not make it pass by indefinitely because they want to wait for a J-Larke study to be completed, which ironically, we actually presented a lot of our material to help them in their study. But nonetheless, we were unsuccessful there. But what we were successful in was getting the budget language in House Bill 1400, which was the House version of the budget. So that means there's still a chance that that revenue can come. Out of layer data, I know Congresses are meeting this week. Maybe we'll get some good news. And in which case, that will change a lot of what we're proposing, which we'll talk about because we did present that in the budget. So federal grants, we do continue to receive federal grants, your title programs for adverse youth, your professional development, Title III for English language learners, Title IV for student support and academic services in enrichment, your special ed flow-through, special ed preschool, and your Perkins Fund for CTE. We say to get those funds, we get very limited funds comparatively to the need. But those are continuous and we don't see those going away. The relief grants, that's where we're taking a large hit on revenue, which you can see on Stacy's presentation. So over the years, got close to $2 million through COVID relief funds, through CARES Act, CARES, as our gear funds. We applied for each set aside grant that they presented. So we did some pretty hefty H-BAD work that way. And we're able to get everything we needed to clean air school, make sure we could mitigate during COVID. And also, as the last year or so, those funds were more emphasized on learning loss and using them for support services and mental health. So that's where we, we sort of geared that. But remember, with trying to mitigate these areas, it doesn't, there's not a magic program that you could just adopt and give to your child to provide wraparound services. That takes very specialized training, it takes personnel, it takes those types of supports. And just because that's where funds went away, the need didn't go away. It's going to take three to five years before we really see a big difference with some of these interventions that we're making. So that's part of the, the costs of educating students post-COVID as well. All right, so in the school budget, what's new? We continue to apply for grants. At this point in time, it's pretty early to get guaranteed letters of, letters of agreement or MOUs in place. So those are usually incorporated later through our appropriations process. But we, the ones that we do know about, we do build in. Commit to be fit is one that we anticipate. And that one runs sort of between fiscal years. So that one's a little bit funny. Virginia College Advising Core grants, that advisor, college advisor at the high school full time. Those all look like they're sustaining and no chance of going away. So that's always good. But those are the things we can put in front of the budget. But until we get those, those agreements in place, usually toward the end of the fiscal year or midsummer, that's when we have to take care of those. This budget does support our academy model as an comprehensive plan. So we've been successful in implementing our Health Science Academy and Ag Academy. They're very successful with students. Those classes are busting at the seams. So that's wonderful to see. Health Science Academy, we continue to partner with RAPC. And also we are partnering now that we have our, another person with the Fit Kids Plan, also funded by a grant. We have more flexibility to have our nurses teach some of our intro level health science classes to even get a feeder going. So that's been wonderful. Ag Academy continues to take on lots of ideas there to expand. But again, that takes funding and the state may not agree that that's an SOQ position either. So that's something we need to remember that we're supporting. Fine Arts Academy, we started down this journey, had some turnover. But I'm very excited that Ms. Leah Page, our Director of Bands, has been instrumental in increasing numbers and offering so many opportunities for students that we didn't even think were possible, including an acapella group and a percussion ensemble and all these different competitions. And I think she had about 70% of the fifth grade sign up for MIT. So that's amazing. So this budget does continue to support that Fine Arts Academy. She will take on that role of our Fine Arts Academy Coordinator and keep putting all those pieces together. She's involved in all of it. But we also did have an assistant band director built in this year, showed numbers, expanded. And that was something we talked about years ago. When we were at T or Todd reading, there was a lot of debate among parents and students and staff about whether or not we could diminish that. It's just the numbers were getting so low, we could not support that full time position. Now we need that position to continue those programs. So it's not a new expense because we already had built it in. Should that arise where we could build that back. But we do want to advertise for that because it is taking off so much and she's going to need some, some help to do that. Our Fit Kids Clinic, we are experiencing still a part of that transition to an urgent care model with a new office. The Pediatric Family Care Office that was part of that grant did remove themselves from that and couldn't meet the grant goals that we had set out. But the urgent care model looks to be very promising. But again, we sort of have to start back over with creating all those agreements and making sure things are placed. They have had their point of care testing meeting and have come and visited the site. Very excited about it, but it just may, it's taking a little longer than I'd like to, to launch. But that's something that we'll continue to support. Our mental health services continue to be super important. We are struggling a little bit with our outpatient and school-based counseling providers having consistent counselors. And that's something that is out of our control, but we would like to maintain this agreement or at least look at providers that can continue those services. They're increasingly important. The caseloads are high, the referral numbers are very high. This is pretty self-sustaining because it's built through Medicaid and private insurance. And then we also have a grant to cover gap funding, but the need is there. But we need providers that can service our students. So we have a lot of conversation about that. We do have further conversation with the wraparound table as well. All right. So here's the breakdown of our previous budget cycle. So you can see what the transfer from the county has been and then what we're proposing in FY '24. Because again, we don't have any guarantee the Congress budget will come through. So we have to plan as though it's not there. And if so, that's where we get the ask over last year of $547, $163, sorry. But if we find out that, that supplemental basic aid cap is lifted, that number looks a lot better than what we can handle. But also because we weren't able to deliver everything we wanted to do for our staff who worked so hard, they are going to feel that health insurance increase. And they're going to see that we can only do that 5%. If this goes through, we would, would be able to do the 7% that I'm sure most of the surrounding counties can do because they do receive a lot more funding to do that. And then because they have the further capacity, they may say, let's throw in another three and touch the edge on. And that's where RAPHAN does fall behind a lot because we only get such a small portion and have to make that up elsewhere. In this case, through the cuts that we make, that's how we've been able to maintain. We think we're still in a, in a good spot considering. But the cost that we had initially were overall over $1 million, 1.2 million before we cut out a lot of those pieces to try to make it where we thought it was reasonable. We don't want, got so much that if this does come through, we're rehiring for some great people. But that's where it's going to be. But that's where it's going to be less positions, people, health insurance, where we've got it everything. So the budget structure, there's these pages you can see for full transparency in every category, the breakdown of each of the functions in the budget. Those correspond directly with the big budget book that you can go through, not by line if you'd like, and it's all there. It breaks down all the positions and the salaries, the FICA, VRS benefits for all of these different categories. The summaries are there for you, so you can see where all the money goes. And then final budget summary on page 24 is the total breakdown there and where we came to our grand total of the budget. Which is interesting because the budget we're proposing overall is actually less than what the current fiscal year is at this time last year, but because revenue was reduced by so much, and there are other, you know, cost increases other than just personnel and health insurance, although that is not the bulk of it. But there are inflationary factors considered in there, utilities that go up, gas prices, everything else, material supplies destruction. And then we also have quite a few stringent mandates from the state that we are going to have to meet with, which we're not opposed to that. In fact, Virginia Literacy Act is going to be really great for kids. Just takes a lot of training, a lot of programming, a lot of specific resources that the federal grants that we get for professional development are just very insufficient to meet. So we do have a lot of requirements on this, and it's a heavy toll, but hopefully this will get us through. Salaries and benefits, you can see already, we did so much work to catch up and did pretty well with getting up on that salary scale. But again, this is what happens when other counties get a lot more money to do the increases. Holding pretty steady with the 510-20, better anyway than we thought in length. And the other consideration is we were able to absorb more of the health insurance than we had thought. And a lot of the districts say, depending on what theirs are going to be next year, they may not be able to absorb at the same levels that we just showed you. So that's why we thought maintaining theirs would give us a little bit of an edge if they had to pass an entire decrease, but that's something we don't quite know just yet. You can see where we rank on these comparison districts. Our first year is a little bit lower, but we did that compression number so we kind of stay stable and then jump. Our teacher scale is here as well, it's being proposed for FY '24. And then here's where you can really see where you see the sustaining increase in the cost for your personnel the last few years, 5%, 5%, 5%. That's a lot compared to the last 10 years where we barely even got to that level, which is a good thing from the state's perspective. They're doing a good thing investing in your teaching force. They deserve it, they need that. But that requires the localities to invest in.
So you're not paying for it?
Right, not for us, not in our case. So they're saying this is good for everyone to do, but they're tasking localities based on the LCI to make up the difference in these investments. And we're still calling short of what both chambers of the General Assembly are proposing, which is a 7%, which are already lower than that. If that supplemental does come in, we do hope to get that up even further. There hasn't been any changes in VRS, so we're keeping that stable, which can be another cost factor. Local choice seems to be our, so far still our best bet, keeping our pool pretty stable. We are seeing these increases, but it did come in lower than we thought with a very, very high claims year, which was very surprising to us. So that shows that this stabilization pool does help. So we do plan to stay with local choice. The insurance rates are here for all of the coverage as they're proposed for this year '24. We're still, as Stacy had mentioned, incentivizing the high deductible with an HSA, making the first deposit $500 to the HSA account for employees who switch. And we're also getting these individualized counseling and consulting on each family situation if they want to meet with a counselor to determine to go through. If I have a lot of medicine, so I have this situation, it doesn't make sense for me to switch. Well, no, not as it stands, but if you purchase a small amount of supplemental, then it may bridge that gap and is still less than the previous payment. You know, so those kinds of conversations that really take some, just take some time in staff. Commit to be fit will continue. We have been increasing our engagement with staff and students and nutrition and all of those things are expanding. In fact, in our recent health needs assessment that was conducted by an outside consultant for Rabbit Home, Commit to be Fit was actually named as one of the priority resources that could be expanded into the county. So that's great for our, I'm trying to write that, so that's good. And we are looking for ways to continue to support our community through that program. Since fiscal year '17, we have $72.5 million for our fourth Commit to be Fit initiative. We are very proud of that. Our transportation planned bus cycle is there, however, we did remove that new bus for fiscal year '24. For now, we are applying for some other competitive grants for infrastructure modernization. If those could come in as one-time funds, we may be able to get the bus and continue that cycle. Our bus fleet is in great shape. I can personally say that now, I'm trying. Yeah, so we'd like to keep it that way. There's a lot of wear and tear on our buses on some of these backroads, so very important. Operations made in some facilities, we heard from Dr. Bolt at that last meeting. Been very busy, especially with the new influx and infusion of state and federal funds for that purpose. So we didn't waste any time with that. Dr. Bolt had quotes ready to roll. The work orders were a little bit tougher last year because we didn't get the finalized budget until so late. But this summer is going to be very, very busy with those funds. And again, we did convince our buyer to plan into basically two, little until a year. And then finally, acknowledgements. Thank you to all our board members, our school board, Board of Supervisors, of course, our county administrators, we're collaborating, keeping the lines of communication open. We do appreciate you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain you.
So I was going to ask you about that. So down in 7.1 on our agenda is the board's discussion of the superintendent's budget. Do you want to wait until then or entertain questions now? We're getting ready to go into public comment time and then some other reports, but then we specifically have a discussion there, Richard Wade.
Well, if there's any clarifying questions on the report, then we can.
It might be good before public comment to go through and clarify questions.
I still didn't catch what staff are being reduced. Oh, I'm sorry. So most of that is through attrition or retirement. So we had an administrator at the board office retire at the end of the year, but we are not replacing. We have two teachers at the elementary school that are either retired, retiring or leaving, that are not available, so that's where we're cutting that. And at the high school, same similar thing, retirements. And then, so we're lucky to write them out. We're squeezing the bit that we can. We have smaller enrollment, so the statistics say that the ratios are okay. Not where I would love to be. I would love to have all the staff that we did have, have four teachers in every single grade level, a specialist for each one, and a new group, and what I can't do. I would love to be that. I mean, that would be the best case scenario without costing another one. See Stacy cringing, she's like, oh my gosh, $3 million?
Yeah. I'm just curious with the accounts. So we're not laying the law for everybody?
No, 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 we're not reductions. No. We had some improvements in our positions that were SRFunded that we had said at the beginning, you know, as funds are available, then these positions might be there for extra instructional support or moving to a different category for that role that was permissible by grant funds, but those that are already pre-planned, we know that's not a smart use for current cost later, so that helps.
You want? I have a couple, a couple of questions, just for clarification. So page 12, we're talking about JLR. And so when the Senate Committee Conference made their decision, they basically said, we're going to wait till we find out what JLR says, right? And so they're waiting for a JLR decision, but I don't know anything about a timeline. Does anybody know anything about a timeline?
It was supposed to have been December.
Right.
So it's already been pushed off. They did release pieces of what they had found with SOQ and dual enrollment. They got a little derailed into some other avenues, but as far as looking for positive facts, no.
And so we don't know, and we're probably, they're not under any obligation to report something before the budgets actually decide, right? They're not under obligation. So it could be, that's just a stalemate, right? And the money that was, that we've been fighting for could still come because it was in the House budget, right? Right, fingers crossed, hold on, I'm still, I'm thinking. And so then I look at page 18, right? And I'm thinking, you know, I've been, I've seen us, you know, we vote on the bottom line, and we send it across the street, and then as a community, we do the best we can, right? So this time, we're about to send something over that's $1 million. A greater local contribution. But if a million dollars shows up.
We have 500 more.
Well, do we? We just voted on the bottom line and sent it across the street. So I'm not sure of the logistics of how the whole thing works out. I guess we would go back and say, hey, it would be nice if we got the other 500K because we've got plans, we've got plans, right? And our plans are, what are we going to do with that thing? And so that 7% which may get dictated to us, we don't even know yet. So right now, it's 5%. It may be 7, and that's not built in either. So I'm wondering if we're sending them a worst case. It's, I'm thinking if I need to be worse, worst case. And just to make sure we're covered. If it goes to seven, if we're really getting it wrong, because it's not even built in this then, there's nothing in the 547. But here's what I mean. We have a great relationship going back and forth across the street, and we're going to work out this thing, right? I know that that's true. I just want people to know, we're sending something across the street that has a half million dollar additional price tag to it, but there's many parameters still in play, and the people should know that if we get dictated 7%, we're going to have to do 7% and that's more than a half million. Or it's got to come from somewhere, right? So that's concerning to me because there's so many unknowns. You know, every budget can go up with some unknowns. This particular year is a bottom for us, for this bottom line. Now, we have to deliver a document before March 31st, and from what I can tell, nothing's going to change between now and March 31st. We're not going to know anything. So we're obligated to send something across the street to the supervisors before we really know what we're managing. And that's just the facts. And they know that, and we're just going to have to deal with it when we find out the truth, whenever that happens, right? That's what we're standing.
Well, and that's how it typically is. And it's just, we usually don't have such a significant disparity in what is going to happen and what is going to happen because we rely so little on state revenue.
Right.
This case, there is a huge factor at play, so giving a worst case, it could be worse.
It could be worse, yeah.
But what you're saying.
I guess I'm just throwing up a flare of saying, bottle up.
And everything that we've been missing, and also with mandate increases too, you try and do that the best you can, but they say you have to meet this amount to get a state match, even though it may not be the full extent. So meeting somewhere in the middle where we can manage that too is kind of what we're limited for now. But of course, if there's any revisions at the board, like we can't make that before.
I mean, we've got a, we basically have a week, and what's going to change in a week? Great. We have a work session planned next week. I can't see anything changing in the next seven days from what it occurs. Last thing, I was just going to ask a question on 31. It's a bus question. Those are easy, right? And so you had mentioned that you had pulled the bus from the this year's budget, but there's two of them, right? So we pulled two buses from this year, right? Just want to make sure we're not. Bus codes for what now, 80K?
123.
123, is that what it's called?
Quarterback.
One bus, 120.
Please hear that, 1970.
So two buses is a quarter back down. Great. All right. That's all the questions I have. Just trying to get clarification. I want people to know that there's a lot of parameters, we have no control over them, and this is a traumatic year because, for several reasons. That's all. Any other questions? We're up here. All right, well, hey, thanks. Good work. It communicates very well. We know a lot about what's going on under the hood. I appreciate that, I appreciate it. And the legwork on figuring out what normal looks like with our neighbors. Appreciate it. It's a lot to put together. Well, just checking.
Well, check. Well, how are you feeling emotionally this?
Mercifully.
Very situation. No, it's been a difficult road, but as far as our physical health, we're good sleeping right now, nothing to report.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, moving into public comment, this is our public hearing on the budget specifically. There's public comment later. If you came here to ask questions or have discussion about things other than the budget, you can save that for later in the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to address the board this evening, the public hearings out of, anyone? All right. There is the board surprise also to have a public hearing that they'll be holding. I don't know where, probably right back here, historically. And there'll be another chance for that. And of course, since January, the school board has entertained whatever comments that the public has about the budget process and what's in the budget every month, and will continue to listen. But at this time, they're the hearing of course. Moving on, Headwaters Representative.
Do you have to report? Then, Headwaters, another busy month for Headwaters. I didn't get to meet a person, Commissioner Nollie, but I have to report here, forgot to speak, emailed. The scholarship applications, there are about 25 scholarship applications from high school students received and 26 from alumni. So that's, that's an interesting thing, that the alumni positions have exceeded the current tenure, so it seems like those alumni scholarships are getting traction. The award will be announced in April May and typically exceeds a million dollars awarded to our students. There, who will contribute to support students pursuing trade school through a high school plus program, which allows students to submit requests for funding for after five years after graduation. With the starters mentors, there are 12 active mentoring pairs now, which has also increased and continuing to look for more mentors. And the pairs have to go on a field trip to state line in Culpeper, which is a great place to learn about teamwork together. The summer course is going to be June 19th to 30th at the high school, and then they're going to be partnering with Headwaters and GRAB together for a day-long programming option in the office. There will be a drama program in the other half of the day. And so the course will operate from 8:00 to 9:00 noon, and the drama program will be one to four, and families can sign up for one or the other for both. The Dolly Partners Innovation Library, Headwaters CCLC and Rabbit Handic Library are partnering to host the second Dolly Partners Innovation Library event on April 1st from 11:00 to 1:00 PM at the library. And parents can bring their children ages zero to five to enjoy Storytime Lunch, free books, and our. storytime lunch, free books, and arts and crafts. And you can bring your older siblings for lunch as well. There's a partnership that is imminent with Youth for Understanding. Headwaters is working with, with Youth for Understanding for 15, Durham High School students, Rockhenn County from April 1st to 14th, to Escuela County, Shallow, Rockhenn County High School students, complete service projects, and also just to get sites in the area and hope that it will inspire some students to come and study and progress. And that was great having you here.
Thank you. MBTS?
We did not mean that we will anything for.
Thank you. Moving on, discussion of superintendent's budget. Is there anybody else that has any exhausting comments or questions, clarifications?
Do you have sort of, I don't know what to say what they are. Do you know if you get that 7% you have things in your sights, what might else be cut, or what else we might be able to create a better path for us remarkably if we get $1 million?
Oh, we were getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would help us stabilize our rates, even if we're looking down into the future. Also, going for that 7%, I would suggest that. That will still be hanging balance, basically, in revenue, which we would hope would be fully appropriated. But then there would be a return at the end of the year because, of course, we wouldn't have built in those expenses. Or we could shore that up in our appropriations or something like that. But we're not going to overshoot it just to spend it, but just what we would do is definitely put in that 7% because that's what everybody else will.
Our, our original intent was to try to give the employees enough that it would cover the increase. Basically, employees can increase the insurance to them, but increase their salary enough to compensate for them. That was our original intent. That's what we're accommodating. That would be very helpful.
And seeing at the 80%, we feel like we've done that to a much greater extent than what we had prepared the staff for originally, which was to drop to the third year, which would have been next year, to a 50/50 split. And that Stiglitz's strike rate would have been about $356 a month.
That's a lot.
And now it's 120. So we, I think we've done a good job in preparing it for the workers and trying to, but nothing's said until this is just what we're proposing. A lot's going to determine whether how, how this budget shakes out.
We're letting you get the difference between the last quarter, which is our employees' agreement with the county program, was that if you say 200,000?
It would, it would cost us an additional 200,000 dollars to.
An additional 200,000?
To do the same percentage of the county.
And that would be the same one of the counties.
Right, with our claims. They have, they have one claim that's different. They do it, Kiowa's 250, ours are 500, 1,000. So just based on our claims doing the percentages of the thing, it would cost us an additional 200,000.
And that would assume that the percentage of our employees would do 250?
Well, I didn't even look at that. I was just based on having a Kiowa 510,000 and having them do.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have any orphans or to help. Yeah, maybe 250 would be very costly.
And even more costly.
Yes.
Oh, yes. In the 3s.
What was that?
In the 3s.
It would probably be close to us.
So I was just looking at the next item, which is the budget calendar. And I'm trying to figure out what's different. Can you help me out?
It said?
It said, well, there's a modification because we have done our action items. So there's got to be something different about.
It's not different. It's just if you, if you don't want to do the.
Then you cancel it.
Oh, if we cancel next Tuesday's.
So we would have to modify.
I got you. I got you. Thanks. So, so really, that's the discussion. Is anything going to change between now and next Tuesday? I don't think so. And if we don't have more information, what will be the board's, what is the board going to change about with this current cross the street? I don't see a change.
I think the question is as solid as we can ever get. I mean, they both, Marvel's young, trying to get it down to where we can live with it to something great. And I don't see us making any major big cuts in the meantime. And I don't see any meantime money coming in, except for the possibility of what happens down the street. So we're at a closing point.
So then, we will vote on our bottom line tonight, cancel next Tuesday's meeting.
I agree.
That seems to be our consensus.
I don't see how we.
So the first thing we'll do when we get to action is to make a motion to adopt the budget calendar change, which excludes next Tuesday. And if we vote on the budget tonight, then we will get that bottom line and budget across the room. So. Yes, PJ, policy updates. So these are things for us to review. We'll be voting on next one.
Right.
The lights have chances to suppose.
I get it.
Okay. Now, the board's open to public comment. Does anybody have anything generic that you would like to discuss tonight in public comment?
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm in the Wakefield district. And I just want to congratulate all of you guys on an amazing basketball team. Like, you can get great players and you can get a great coach, but without the whole school community being behind you, you're not going to win the state. And that, you know, that was like the best moment in my life so far this year. So thank you all so much. And then the other thing is, just to let us know when we need to push legislators on when it gets to the moment of deciding on the budget. Because we're ready to go. Found on doors.
You know how to get rid of the president?
Yeah, I know now. I know the doors. Hopefully it'll be more effective.
On the list of cooperies, it's public. Those are the ones that are to make the decision behind last year's.
The last thing is, you know, and I realize that everybody thinks they're an expert on education because actually they went to school and probably have been to school. But in 30 years of teaching at law school, what I discovered was the longer the class, the less people learned. And, you know, so that we had schedules in over 30 years that were either 50 minutes, I had one as long as three hours, what you know. But the ones that were shorter and met more frequently, even for law students who are dying to do well, and that's, I was, you know, it's a no, it's not hard to teach law students because they're so motivated. But I just, I just wanted to throw that in, that you guys know the high school students better than I do, but I know my attention span is pretty short. And I mean, but for the law students, we just got through a lot more material and students seem to learn a lot more with shorter, more frequent classes. I just thought.
Thanks, Steph. Anyone else? Can we use J.C.'s? Action items. This is our first opportunity to vote the budget. This really has a motion.
Yes.
If you want to use it.
I'd like to make the motion to accept a proposed budget of 1437,300,630 dollars to be submitted to the board superlative on March 31st, 2023, recognizing that the state may provide additional funds through supplemental aid package that will adjust the bottom.
All right. Make the motion, Mr. Seg. Have a second, Mr. Bynum. Is there any discussion? Larry, can you, can you fill that entire document up to the clerk of the board or the special agent or down?
Yeah.
Make sure she fills it. All in favor, aye, is no. And sir, a motion to modify the budget calendar excluding next Tuesday's meeting. Mr. Broderick, second.
Second.
Mr. Rubin, any discussion? All in favor, aye, is no. So is there any new business? Is there any request for future agenda items? Can you get a report back from Mr. Bolster? I can't hear you. Can you get a report back from Mr. Bolster? How much schools are working together for the training?
And any future training for this summer, like a plan?
We can check with him and see what the long-term plan is.
And secondly, I keep coming back to our local solar operation. Do we know any more than we did two months ago?
Yes. Good. So we just, we did receive word that we did not get the grant that we applied for through the federal government, through that infrastructure bill that was put out there. So we're moving forward on the other bids that we had talked about to see what else we can get. I think Bob's already collected some on the auxiliary gym, it's planned for the courtyard project at the high school with the library tuition, some other areas, and then seeing if we can bring that back to the board. It is notable that our budget for lectures is higher. None of them is higher, the secretary is higher, so it's not higher. And we still need to, if we do have, I think Rob was getting various sized projects, so if we knew the number, this is what it costs to do, visible roofs is what it costs to do, what we can mount on our roofs, would be useful number to have out there. And that's what she had switched gears toward after knowing that Grant wasn't going to come in and what she had plenty way to do. So now.
She does have to have the.
Yes, big nines. Yes, yes. And even minor companies like Enrasko to do a full-scale reduction. So we should have those back to you soon, as soon as we get all the responses we need.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, just very quickly, I'll probably make a first talk to me about the pack for their, their outpouring of sirens and lights. I'm going to ride home from the, from the ballgame the other night. It was a lot of fun.
It's a great community. They're all together.
Right. You wouldn't, you wouldn't realize, you wouldn't recognize how many people came out on the 211 between Amosville and here. Just hundreds. I mean, it was just marvelous. It's cool. And go one phone call or one text, whatever it was.
25 minutes before that happened. That's how quick.
Yeah, just one text. Here we were.
I got to be on the floor at the VCU stadium at the St. Center with Mr. Suger, Dr. Gensley, and Courtney, and Michael Weber, and Keer, and they were there with us. And I thought there was nobody more excited for Carlos. I mean, pictures is already kind of wired. But in that last three seconds, he started to just shoot. It's a great thing to be playing. So exciting. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is very, very same week on April the 11th. The board supervisors are having a hearing on the budget in this room on the 17th of April, or 17th, a week before they're scheduled to make a decision on the school budget. So those are opportunities to come and speak and support or to question. And again, if the public has questions between now and that time, please speak to your representative. Is there anybody on line tonight?
There is.
Forgot to ask.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry about that.
Need to see if they have any.
Well, one of them's ours.
Kind of, what, how?
Lacy, did you have any public comment?
I know it's out of order, but I just forgot.
She's good.
She's good. Well, thanks for coming on line. We'll try not to forget you next time. Sir, a motion to quit close session.
I'm with the board to be in close sessions for talking about this discussion of appointing the staff for a classified coaching position and dismissal of this classification pursuant to the meeting close second. 2.2, that's 371,1A1.
Mr. Broderick, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We'll be back for the public session in five minutes. If you want to hang out, if you don't, tell you all the questions. Just another funny thing.